You're now live streaming.
Hey, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 Board of Forest Republic Meeting. This is a one day virtual event. For the record, I'm Jim Kelly, Chair of the State Board of Forestry. Also, we'll make a note that this meeting was scheduled to start at 1 o'clock. It is now 1:47 and there have been technical difficulties. It appears that the Zoom has had a major breakdown. And so we will proceed. Please let me know at any point if we continue to have any further technical troubles and if so, we will reschedule. So today's meeting will be livestreamed on YouTube, we hope. To make sure our viewers online can follow along, I'll provide some best practices and housekeeping tips. Everyone participating in the virtual meeting room, please silence your cell phones and try to limit background noises. For online participants, remember to mute yourself when not speaking and disable your video when not presenting or providing public comment. We ask that everyone participating today to state their names before speaking so that those listening can track commentary for the meeting recording. If you experience technical issues in the online meeting room, use the chat function on Zoom to connect with our ODF hosts during this event. So our agenda has stated that we have one decision item in front of the board. This has been the decision whether or not we would have end this meeting with a vote and a decision item has been controversial and I have come to the conclusion that it is best that we use our time to try to each of us give as much direction after the presentation to Mike and his staff in the State Forest Division on where we are with the the FMP and and the rulemaking and we will be back later for a final vote. So we will still have a presentation from ODF staff and we will still accept public testimony. Last I knew, we had about eight people signed up. And we will continue to also accept written testimony. And to submit written testimony, please send it to the to the Board of Forestry at odf.oregon.gov and to have it in the record for the November meeting, please send your comments by December 2nd of this year. Any questions at this point?
Hey Jim, I do have a quick question and you may not be able to answer that right now, or Mike may not, but we're going to do a vote, a final vote later. Do we have a sense of a timeline when that will be? Because I know Mike's on a trajectory of deadlines.
Mike can answer that. I have an idea, but I think Mike can answer that better than I can. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, for the record, Michael Wilson, State Forest Division Chief. Yeah, I we can kind of decide that, I think, a little bit later. Coordinate that maybe offline, but sometime in the spring, we'll be able to bring you more information, more performance measures than we are today. And I think we might be able to tee something up there. We'll be returning to you in March anyway to provide you with a summary of comments that we receive on the forest management plan through the public comment period.
All right, thank you. Liz Akkawa for the record.
Okay, so I'm gonna thank you. We're gonna do a roll call here of board members. Liz Akkawa.
Present virtually.
Heath Curtis.
Present.
Ben Daimeling.
Present by video.
Joe Justice.
Present by video.
Alexia Lovickio. Is absent due to pregnancy and birth of a child. Brenda McComb.
Here by phone.
All right, and I am here as well, Jim Kelly. So we have no consent agenda items for this meeting. Does anybody have any opening comments? Before we we go to the presentation, any board members have any opening comments? Or Tim, on behalf of ODF, do you have any opening comments?
I have one. Chair Kelly, oh, go ahead. Tim?
Sorry about that. Tim Olshbach interim Deputy State Forester for the record. I just want to share this morning, looking forward to the conversation with the board as we move through those steps with towards a new forest management plan and implementation plans for fiscal year 27. So appreciate the conversation that we'll have throughout the afternoon.
Okay, anybody, yeah, Liz, go ahead.
Okay, so Chair Kelly, you asked about the American Revolution, if we've been watching Ken Burns, and I have, and also the 250th anniversary for the creation of the United States. And so there's a little article about Aristotle and C.S. Lewis about civility. And I thought it's something that I always remind myself when I'm speaking. And it said that civility is one of the virtues that you don't need when you're, everyone's on the same page. But civility is by definition exercised when it is needed, when we disagree about what we believe is good and what we love. Just a thought going into this.
Just want to be clear, I think I was a little it wasn't clear about our next steps. And after we finish here and I see your hand up, Heath, the next thing we'll do is the public comment and then hear from the Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee and then the staff presentation. So Heath.
I have some thoughts about how we handle the performance measures on a go-forward basis. Maybe we can discuss that toward the end of the meeting today.
I certainly I thought that that was pretty part of what we were talking about. So that's where in the middle of that process. Any other opening comments? Okay, with that, we'll go to the public comment part of our meeting. So for those participating, we ask that everyone in the online queue not exceed their allotted time of three minutes. As a reminder, this forum is reserved for remarks on topics for this agenda item. Before you begin, please state your full name and associated affiliation if you're representing a group or an organization. A timer will be presented to track your time and each commenter will be called on by the board administrator. With limited time available, anyone who exceeds their time will be prompted to provide a closing statement and muted. With that, Denise, are we ready to engage with public comment?
Yes, Chair Kelly, we are. We have nine people in the queue who have signed up to provide commentary today. To help us stay on track, I will list names in a set order and call on each of you to begin your testimony. Please be prepared to engage when your name is called on. When you begin a timer, will be displayed for three minutes. When the timer runs out, we ask that you provide your closing statement. Please make sure you have renamed yourself to the name you signed up with so that I know who to transfer over and open up their ability to speak. First, we have Amanda Sullivan Astor. Then it will be Mike McKibben and Jenny Johnson, Michael Lang, Seth Barnes, Colin Emerson, Joseph Vale, Joseph Uren and Susan Smith. Amanda, we are ready for you. You can unmute yourself.
Okay, it looks like we don't have video, just audio.
We can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, interim State Forester, or in this case, maybe Tim Olshbach. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Amanda Sullivan Astor, Forest Policy Manager for Associated Oregon Loggers. We urge you to select alternative three to harvest a sustained and certain volume on state lands closest to the sustainably harvested 20-year average, which is around 248 million board feet. HCP harvest estimates have ranged from 226 in the draft EIS to 247 as an early HCP prediction. A 230 million board foot target is not an aggressive stretch. It simply keeps the board closer to what you promised and to what operators have built their businesses around. Alternative three at 230 uses the full toolbox of prescriptions and practices that the HCP allows. This volume is not all clear cuts. It includes restoration thinning and other treatments inside habitat conservation areas and riparian conservation areas alongside work in non-HCA's. The department's modeling shows that scenario paths starting at this level still meet the habitat objectives and keep these forests as a carbon sink with live tree carbon increasing in owl habitat inside HCA's managed the same as in lower harvest scenarios. On behalf of forest operators and small business contractors across Oregon, I ask you to adopt alternative three with a 230 million board foot annual target and clear direction to fully utilize all land types allowed under the HCP for forest management plan attainment. A decision like this would signal to forest contractors that you value their input, you value their hard work, you value their commitment to sustainable operations, and you value their engagement as a critical component of the complete and coordinated wildfire system. We can support businesses, communities, and people of Oregon while also protecting our natural resources and ecosystem services. We can do all of this without a penny from the general fund. You have the power to keep contractors and business, communities solvent, and state forests actively managed for the balance of not only environmental, but also social and economic values of which you are charged to provide. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Kelly and fellow board members. My name is Mike McKibben and I am the Director of Western Resources for Stimson Lumber Company. Stimson owns and operates three sawmills in western Oregon, including two stud mills located in Tillamook and Gaston and one cutting mill in Clatscanine. Our company employs 336 people across these rural communities and we are one of the largest consumers of ODF timber sales in the region. As the board deliberates the forest management plan, I want to emphasize the importance of adopting performance measures that reflect the realities faced by rural resource-based communities. The right choice will help preserve jobs, maintain local tax bases, and sustain vital public services funded by timberdolt cell dollars. It is essential that the plan aligns with both environmental stewardship and economic vitality, providing a pathway for the future, the department and our communities. I am here today to ask the board to adopt the performance measures outlined in alternative three to help guide the implementation of the draft forest plan. All three alternatives in front of the board use a series of performance measures to compare current conditions with modeled outcomes in 10 years on the acres outside the HCA's. Those performance measures include harvest, inventory, carbon storage and sequestration, and adaptive capacity. The changes over the 10-year period show only slight variations in operational inventory and adaptive capacity. Alternative three, however, allows for the annual harvest volumes of 230 million feet compared to 215 under alternatives one and two. This additional 15 million feet would provide revenue of $2.5 million to the department and 4.8 million to the counties annually over the next decade. I would encourage the board to consider these revenues as the key driver in this decision rather than a byproduct of other considerations. Alternative three also stores 0.6 million metric tons of carbon by the end of the decade. Adopting alternative three will ensure a sustainable supply of timber and support family wage jobs with only minimal differences in modeled outcomes. Our mills depend greatly on the consistent and predictable supply of high-quality timber from ODF managed lands. The stability provided by well-implemented implemented plan, management plan directly impacts not only our operations, but the livelihoods of hundreds of families in the region. When timber supplies become uncertain, it places strain on our workforce and undermines our community's well-being. By choosing alternative three, the board can demonstrate its commitment to responsible stewardship that considers the financial benefits of increased harvest volumes over the next 10 years for the department and the counties. Ultimately, it represents a balanced path forward that benefits forests, local economies, and the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jenny, you are up next.
Thank you. Sounded like a movie soundtrack. I don't have that for me. Can you hear me? I don't see my timer.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Chair and board members, thanks for having me today. My name is Jenny Johnson and I am a resident of Astoria, Oregon, up here in Clatsop County. I grew up in Clatsop County and it's still my home to me and my family. Where I live, logs are harvested, transported, and milled by local businesses, keeping good paying jobs and dollars in our community. This board has already set aside a massive amount of forest land under the Habitat Conservation Plan. Our streams and drinking waters are protected, our wildlife is protected, even wildlife that doesn't exist is protected. Isn't that enough? I ask you to be laser focused on how the acres that remain available for harvest can be utilized to keep our economy strong, producing the jobs and the building materials our region so desperately needs. It's time for the board to look at the bigger picture. Economic values of these forests are too often maligned or minimized by those providing testimony at these meetings. The reality is that economic values are very important. It's part of GPV for a reason. Without it, communities suffer. Strong economic values mean we can pay our bills, provide social services and public safety, keep libraries open, the list goes on and on. Why are such practical considerations often labeled anti-environment or dismissed? Increasing habitat at all costs might feel good to some, but as someone whose community will shoulder those costs, it feels reckless. We shouldn't ask people in other regions or even other countries to harvest timber for us when we can do so proudly and sustainably right here at home. Lastly, we shouldn't place a higher value on wildlife that doesn't exist in some cases over our own people who do exist in our communities. As you weigh decisions about harvest levels and revenue, please think about the human impacts. ODF cannot afford to dismiss the economic realities that surround these lands. The HCP will hit us hard and I urge you to support a harvest level of 230 million board feet a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Michael Lang, you are up next. We're ready when you are.
Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, members of the board. My name's Michael Lang. I'm Senior Policy Manager with Wild Salmon Center. We submitted written comments, which I will just summarize today, but we urge you to postpone a decision whether to approve of performance measures, particularly this one, increasing timber harvest targets for the next 10 years under the draft FMP. Wild Salmon Center supports a vote on all draft performance measures concurrently with the approval of the final FMP. And we ask you to postpone a decision for the following reasons. First of all, we're concerned the draft performance measure conflicts with state law, ORS 526016, which has been discussed quite a lot over the last year or so prohibits the board from directing the state foresters in matters relating to timber sales on state forest land. The draft performance measure would set annual and decadal harvest targets in violation of the statute. Also adapting performance measures prior to the close of public comment is inappropriate in that it would hinder meaningful discussions and engagements with the public on the draft forest management plan. And it sends a message, and I'm sure this isn't true, but the ODF doesn't appear to value public input on forest management decisions. So truly the cart's in front of the horse here. Approval of this performance measure would constrain the ability of the board to amend the draft FMP prior to approval after public comments and preclude the ability to approve the draft plan, also seeming to put timber harvest above other values. And we support balance on state forests, but we're concerned about the way that things are being prioritized here. The staff recommendation is also appears to be inconsistent with the governor's executive order directing the ODF and other agencies, but specifically mentioning the ODF to lead by example, protect key lands and waters, increase transparency, maximize ecological outcomes, and take additional measures by developing and implementing strategies to enhance climate resilience, the state forest HCP, which has been implemented for a year and a half now as part of the baseline, is mandatory federal compliance with the Endangered Species Act and can be relied on to satisfy this executive order. The proposed performance measure could result in clearcutting all remaining older forests outside of the HCA's, and we know that the ODF has not been able to meet key performance measure 10 adopted by the legislature requiring a minimum of 30% of North Coast state forests to be in complex layered forest conditions. Currently, it's only at about 11.75%. Approving this performance measure would further erode public confidence that the ODF is accountable to the public, accountable to the legislature, and to laws that currently exist. So in summary, we urge you to postpone decisions on performance measures until the final FMP is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Up next, we have Seth Barnes. We're ready when you are, Seth.
All right, it's unclear from my end. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Chair Kelly, Deputy State Forester Holchback and members of the board, for the record, my name is Seth Barnes and I'm the Director of Forest Policy at the Oregon Forest Industries Council. I want to preface my comments with an obvious but important recognition. As we sit here today, every state agency has been asked to produce a budget reduction or cuts list, and it's likely just the beginning. I certainly have thoughts about the cuts ODF proposed, but I'm not here today to address that, only to recognize the very real situation we face. We all feel it. It's affecting every Oregonian personally, and this agency and the state of Oregon are certainly not immune. There's been no solution to keep the counties whole and there's no bailout coming. ODF met with your state forest advisory committee last week or in the last couple of weeks and for several hours spoke about the steady decline of the FDF bond, the reductions in stand management and agency practices they're putting in place to try to stem that tide, but it's inevitable. It is this very real environment that we sit here today to consider a plan for managing the remaining non-encumbered lands of the state forests. In that light, a few quick reminders. First, in various settings over the years, ODF has reported that this force is capable of producing more than 400 million board feet per year. Keep that number in mind as you weigh the options presented. And they've reported different numbers over the years and it could be as close as 450 or even higher, but it's north of 400 for certain. Two, every scenario before you meets and exceeds the HCP requirements. Three, these lands must be managed to provide basic services for the trust land counties. If we can't do that, I don't know why we're here. Four, when the HCP was adopted, over half of the forest was set aside and reserved for the express purpose of creating older forest habitat. There was an acknowledgement at that time, but that decision was a conservation decision. And when viewed alone, it represented an imbalance of the three-legged GPV stool. The counties and the forest sector have pleaded with the board to acknowledge the imbalance that that decision represented and still represents. The remaining non-HCA lands, which make up the bulk of the land subject to the forest management plan, must be managed with a sharp focus on production and management outcomes. To that end, we support alternative three as the best option for ensuring balance, consistency, transparency, and fiduciary responsibility for the department and the counties. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Seth. Next up is Colin Emerson. You should be allowed to talk now.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kelly and the members of the board. My name is Colin Emerson and I am speaking today on behalf of our family-owned wood products company, Sierra Pacific Industries. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed forest management plan alternatives. While SPI supports alternative three with a 230 million board foot floor, we want to highlight that this, that any number will mean very little if the department does not honor the more important embedded principles in practice. This means that any policy recommendation should empower the department staff to do good forestry, which brings the greatest economic value from the landscape to the counties and to those dependent on working forests. This is what makes the technical work and our landscapes responsive and resilient. Ultimately, today's decision and the department's work moving forward need to maintain priority of the commitment to active and resilient forest management, dependable harvest, and stewardship of the communities and the counties that rely on these lands. These are not abstract commitments. They are the foundation for why ODF is entrusted to manage our forests and employ professionals to do so. Finally, over half the board managed lands are now dedicated to habitat. Following these decisions, board members at various times have verbalized the commitment to repair and rebuild relationships with Oregon counties, communities, and the impacted businesses. The acres, the acres not already set aside for conservation, for which this discussion is about, is the remaining lever to do that work to generate local stability, rural economies, and jobs, all while also generating critical revenue for a department struggling to financially sustain its own programs. If the board wants to restore trust, ensure accountability, and keep the department aligned with its mission, we encourage a metric like alternative three, which begins to empower your professional staff as they work to create resilient landscapes supporting healthy communities. Your directions today moving forward remain critical to the vibrancy of our landscape, communities, and businesses. Thank you.
Yeah, how's the audio?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Chair Kelly, Vice Chair McComb, and interim State Forester, members of the board. My name is Joseph Vale and I'm the Senior Northwest Representative for Defenders of Wildlife. Defenders is a national organization with over 2 million members. We have donors and activists and with over 40,000 here in Oregon. Defenders has worked for decades to protect at-risk wildlife across the Oregon coast range, including efforts to safeguard the Marble Murlet and increased protections under the Oregon ESA. Our long involvement in Murlet conservation has made it clear that management decisions affecting older, structurally complex forests have consequences for this imperiled seabird. For these reasons, I urge you to postpone any decision to approve the performance measure that's at issue today for the next 10 years. As others have noted, it is premature to adopt performance measures before the close of the public comment period on the draft forest management plan. Furthermore, the performance measure conflicts with the governor's recent executive order, which directs ODF to take additional actions to protect state forests. The state forest habitat conservation plan forms the baseline for management and cannot be used as a substitute for meeting the governor's directive. Adopting the performance measure now would especially be harmful to the Marble Murlet. The measure could lead to clearcutting nearly all remaining mature and older forests outside of habitat conservation areas. The measure could lead to clear cutting nearly all remaining mature and older forests outside of habitat conservation areas. This action directly undermines the key performance measure ten approved by the legislature, which requires that at least thirty percent of the North Coast state forests be maintained in complex older forest conditions. These very forest conditions are increasingly rare, and they're essential for the murelet's survival and recovery. Loss of more of this habitat risks further reducing the nesting success and long-term population declines for this at-risk species. A vote today is unnecessary. Staff will still have ample time to implement the performance measures and develop implementation plans after the final F M P is adopted. Delaying this decision is the only reasonable path to ensure that Oregon state forests and the marble murelet populations that rely on them are managed with care, integrity and fidelity with state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Up next, we have Joseph Yorin. You should be allowed to talk now. Not there anymore? Joseph, can you unmute yourself?
Again.
Okay, thank you. We hear you.
My name is Joseph Yorin.
Okay, we're back. Joseph Yorin, are you still there? Can you unmute yourself?
Expecting to. Okay, this is the fourth run now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joseph Yorin. I represent Seven Caves Bird Alliance, formerly Audubon Society of Lincoln City. I'm really not sure why we are here today. The public comment period for the draft forest management plan is just now beginning. The H C P this draft management plan is supposed to implement has not been approved and still sits with the federal regulatory agencies in essentially a black box. Normal procedure would be for the board to articulate and approve a vision for state forests. Okay, check. Next, engage in deep, meaningful public debate on application for an H C P to protect and recover threatened and endangered species as required by the E S A. Okay, check. Then continue rigorous public engagement to develop a board-approved forest management plan. And we're led to believe this step is a work in progress. Okay, fine. But today, staff are asking you, the Oregon Board of Forestry, to adopt a very specific performance measure that defines and accelerates timber harvest for the next ten years. Performance measures that would effectively guarantee all older, complex layered forests outside of H C A's would be clear cut, completely ignoring direction from the legislature, key performance measure number ten, to ensure that a minimum of thirty percent of North Coast forests are in complex layered condition. While the current two thousand and ten forest management plan set a goal of thirty to fifty percent, overly aggressive timber harvests have left us with a deforested landscape that includes less than fifteen percent older complex structure. Seeking adoption of the staff's proposal at this time, when the public period comment is just beginning and before a single public listening session has become, has been held, makes a mockery of the public engagement process. This fact is made even more clear in light of the department's refusal to conduct a public hearing in Astoria. This decision was obviously made to avoid and ignore a highly motivated sector of our population, which has demanded and been promised greater transparency and accountability. Moreover, it does serious damage to the board's authority to direct forest policy. This is an end run around normal protocol. If adopted today, it would strip you of your ability to amend or improve the plan prior to its eventual adoption. The governor's already stripped you of your responsibility to hire our state forester. You should put this proposal on the shelf until final adoption of the F M P and a permanent state foresters in place. Everyone will have plenty of time to set performance measures at a more appropriate time following a more appropriate decision-making sequence. Thank you for your time and consideration of these comments. Good luck.
Thank you, Joseph. Up next, we have Susan Smith. I am not finding her in our queue. That concludes public comments.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Denise. We will, at this point, now hear from the Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee. Who do we have?
Good afternoon. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can even see you.
Hey, fabulous, fabulous. Well, good afternoon, Chair Kelly, board members, interim Deputy State Forester Holzback. For the record, my name is Aaron Scar and I am the Tillman County Commissioner and the Chair of the Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee. I am joined by Commissioner Margaret McGruder, Columbia County Commissioner and Vice Chair of the Trust Land Counties. We appreciate your time that you have given us this afternoon to provide some comments prior to your very important discussion regarding setting performance measures for the state forests under the new forest management plan. We all know this is a critical conversation as the performance measures chosen will guide management of the state forests for at least a decade, maybe longer. And as we also know, state forests must be managed for greatest permanent value under O A R six two nine oh three five zero zero two zero. There are a few other pieces to this puzzle that we believe are important to the backdrop of the decision that you ultimately make. First, after nearly two years of working with the governor's office, no revenue other than timber harvest revenue has been identified to support county governments and department operation. Second, looking at the current economic picture, we are heading into a downturn with less general fund tax revenues available. Times are likely to get tough, but as your partner, F T L A C has appreciated working with you over the past two years as we prepare for the F M P, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to deliver on this objective, no matter what comes, for the betterment of both the department and county operating budgets. With this plan in place, beginning in fiscal year two thousand and twenty eight, O D F will manage state forests under an implementation plan that implements the Habitat Conservation Plan and the Forest Management Plan. Under the guidance of these plans, approximately fifty-five percent of state forest lands will be managed specifically for threatened and endangered species or will be unavailable for harvest for other reasons. Habitat conservation areas, riparian conservation areas, non-forest areas, and areas not suitable for timber harvest will provide significant habitat for endangered and non-endangered species alike. State forests will store carbon and will continue to provide recreation opportunities for all. Timber harvest will continue to provide revenue that supports local county services, provides timber critical for mills that support jobs in our counties, provides key materials for use building homes and communities across Oregon and across the nation, and provide funding to O D F to operate. Together, these values contribute to the greatest permanent value. Previously, using the best science, O D F modeled state forest management using the best available data and found a management scenario that would provide more timber volume than the alternatives before you without compromising greatest permanent value. That maximum volume scenario showed timber harvest being maximized after ensuring all H C P, F M P and forest practice commitments are achieved, while also maintaining a forest inventory that ensures long-term sustainability. The only limiting factor for available harvest listed in the staff report is the current lack of staff capacity. I invite us all to remember that we are selecting a performance measure for the next decade, not just for today. In front of you, O D F has provided three alternatives for state forest management in the staff report. A key feature of all of these alternatives is that staffing levels would be the limiting factor in harvest levels in the alternatives, rather than the achievement of greatest permanent value. Inadequate staffing constraints, constraints, sorry, the promise of greatest permanent value. State forests are already protected from overharvest in the H C P, the Forest Practices Act, and the most recent executive orders, just to name a few. F T L A C does not believe state forests need to be constrained further in this F M P, and then in fact, it could damage the ability to achieve greatest permanent value in the state forests. As presented, there is a concern that the lower limits of harvest in the alternatives will not provide adequate revenue for the department to operate while maintaining a three to six month desired reserve. Notice the absence of a reserve account in alternative one. In alternatives two and three, a reserve is called out, but again, the limiting factor of staff is called out. With the state seeing decreased revenue in coming years, counting on general funds to support the implementation of the H C P to achieve greatest permanent value is unlikely. F T L A C sees a hopeful outlook in alternative two in that it provides the flexibility to respond to staffing levels and market conditions by not placing a top limit on the harvest other than those already imposed by the H C P, which again are those needed to assure greatest permanent value is achieved. The department can be flexible and take the opportunities to harvest more if and when it is possible without an artificial limit that again goes beyond what is needed in the H C P. That being said, however, we propose a modification to alternative two in the staff report. Our proposed modification acknowledges current staffing concerns, but also seeks greatest permanent value by allowing harvest levels consistent with O D F's model results when it can be done. We understand that there is no guarantee of higher harvest levels, but the opportunity would exist if staffing could be increased. We've provided to each of you a copy of our suggested amendments to alternative two. To ensure that O D F has the staff needed under this alternative, F T L A C commits to O D F that our staff will collaborate with O D F to develop proposals that will increase staffing to the level required to achieve the proposed timber harvest performance measure and to secure greatest permanent value as described in O A R six two nine oh three five zero zero two zero. Counties are statutorily directed under O R S five two six point one five six to advise the Board of Forestry and the State Forester on the management of state forest lands. And the board and State Forester are statutorily directed to consult with the counties. We held a Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee meeting on November seventh, and we're disappointed that neither the State Forester nor any member of the board was present. This was the first F T L A C meeting since the passage of Senate Bill one oh five one, and we hope this is not a preview of what is potentially on the horizon. We had a great dialogue with the department and are still committed to working towards solutions. We strongly recommend members of the board listen to the dialogue. We are all in this together with a shared goal for our state forests. Let's set a performance measure that will allow us the flexibility to meet that goal by working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much and I did tell you that I wasn't going to be able to be there, and I'm sorry that no other board members were there for that, for that last meeting. I, I think since we got started almost an hour late, I am going to invoke my prerogative as chair to throw in a quick bathroom break. So let's, let's do that right now. It's two thirty-one. Let's be back in nine minutes at two forty.